We're good. Good evening, everybody. I'll now call into it, welcome everyone to the Board of Supervisors, Mayne. Thank you for joining us tonight. Looks like we have a full house. There are a couple of seats in case anyone's looking for one. Just a reminder to everyone that this meeting is hybrid, so there are people joining us online and also the meeting is being recorded, so FYI. With that, I will now ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. First item, first we do approve the minutes for the April 10th meeting and the May 1st, 2023 workshop meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. First, we have the reports from the Police Department.
Coming, everyone. For the month of April, 2023, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,113 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 117 traffic citations, investigated third motor vehicle crashes, and arrested 15 individuals. Additionally, for the month of April, the department members conducted one motor carrier detail at the weigh station, resulting in 292 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, one of which was found to be overweight. During the control, the officers also performed three inspections and found several violations. Sergeant McBride conducted 11 additional commercial vehicle inspections during his normal workdays, resulting in four vehicles being placed out of service. Year-to-date calls for service, 4,643. Arrest, 53. Traffic citations, 544. Warning warnings, 138. Crash investigations, 109. Trucks weighed, 1,669. Overweight trucks, 4. Inspections, 48. Trucks out of service, 14. And drivers out of service, 3. For the month of April, we had no Narcan administrations, and the year-to-date is also zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, pleasure.
Hi, good evening. Through the month of April, in the general fund, we've collected just under 32% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just over 31% of our budgeted expenditures.
Great, thank you. Public Works.
Good evening. The daily average flow to the Downingtown Treatment Plant was approximately 1.53 million gallons per day. There were no new sewer connections to either the Dara or Eagleview wastewater treatment areas. Township received 4.86 inches of rain for the month of April. Normal is about 3.8. We are still about 2.5 inches below what would be average for the year. The department responded to 140 EPA 1 calls for the month of April. The Sewer Division performed preventative maintenance in accordance with the Sanitary Sewer System Maintenance Program and cleaned and televised 8,747 feet of sewer pipe in the Rhonda and Pine Creek Valley Developments. And I did want to note that when we get to this time of year, the Sewer Department will be walking and mowing the sewer right away, so that in the event of an emergency, we can get to them quickly. So you may see township employees out there mowing. Then finally, the Roads Department replaced 315 feet of failed corrugated metal pipe with HDP plastic pipe in the Wellsters Development.
Great, thank you. Fire Marshal?
Thank you. For the month of April, the department issued 84 permits for construction activities. Total of 89 inspections were conducted. Total of 12 fire code inspections were conducted. 25 use and occupancy certificates were issued. The Fire Marshal responded to 17 incidents and also had three bounty complaints and two fire investigations for more.
Thank you. And for the Euclid, uh, Lionville Fire Company?
Yes, for the month of April, the Fire Department responded to 63 incidents. In Euclid, there was 36, Upper Euclid, 10, West Pikeville, 2, and 15 other townships. By year-to-date, we are at 199.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have someone here from Euclid Ambulance or a report?
Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. This month, 411 calls, 135 of those in Euclid Township. Year-to-date, we're at 1,762 calls. Looking at our target probably this year, 5,600 calls, up about 600 calls from last year.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the reports as presented?
So moved.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, moving on to the business, the first item of business is the Ted Giacomis Senior Park Sign Presentation. So, um, many of you have note, may have noticed or have heard that we are building, currently building a senior park near the, in the LIA Park on 113. It's currently under construction. And this park was the brainchild of Doug Hanley, our former former manager. But I'm very excited to have it open this summer. And we are dedicating the park to our dear friend Ted Giacomis, who is unfortunately no longer with us. He was a township engineer for many, many years and a very good friend to everyone he knew and who knew him. And so we, earlier this year, we asked some Downingtown art students to make a drawing or a painting of Ted and his dog to put on the sign that we'll put up at the senior park, so that we can always remember him. And I'm I want to first thank Bruce McKenny, who has been leading this project, shepherding it through and, you know, getting all the details organized. So thanks, Bruce. And also Julie Dimino from Sherman, let's see, she's the Art Department Curriculum Teacher at Sherman Creek Elementary. Is she here today? Yeah, okay. Hi, Julie, I talked to you on the phone. Uh, thank you for coordinating this with the art departments in Downingtown. Um, so we had a lot of submissions and it was a difficult choice, but the board, we voted, it was one of the best parts of our jobs, actually. And we would like to present the winner, which, whose artwork you can see right here on the sign that will be going up in the park, to Juliana Upham. Do you want to come up here, Juliana? So I can just say a couple of words about how wonderful you are. Juliana is a 2023 Downingtown East. Well, she will be a graduate, right? You're almost there. She has a 4.2 GPA. Congratulations. That's amazing. But that's not all. She has been accepted to Rochester Institute of Technology, where you'll be going in the fall. And you will be majoring in illustration, so that's awesome. We love having more artwork in the world, so thank you for pursuing that. And her mom Paulette Upham is here too, so congratulations to mom for basically being one of them on. So, um, I have here a $500 prize for you to use towards your education and no, no. Uh, on art supplies, right? On art supplies, but we wish you, we wish you the best of luck and in following your passion and, yeah, congratulations. Doug, did you want to say some words about Ted Giacomis since you're here? Cause yes.
Right, can I, is this on? Okay. Ted Giacomis first set foot in this building somewhere right around 1983. At that point, he was an engineer for the dark side. He was with the developers. And he was with Chester Valley Engineers and the first plan that came through that time was Greenbrier 4, which is out in William Salisbury, Birch, Elm, that area out there. We were in the old meeting room, right down the hall here. Held about 70 people if we were lucky. And as can be seen tonight, with all the people that are here for Lionville Station Road, there were this many and then some. They were out the doors, out the windows, leaning in, trying to hear what was going on. Ted was the engineer for the developer. And we were quite impressed with the way that he handled himself that night. Didn't lose his cool at all and carried it through many, many meetings. We eventually wound up at the Lionville Fire Hall, where we could accommodate everybody. But that was Ted. And eventually, as we got in towards the end of the, like, right around 1988, uh, we needed to do something with Peck Road. And Ted had impressed us sufficiently that we asked him to please take a look at Peck Road and what he might be able to do reasonably, not overly expensive. And he did. And that was the project that got him to be named Township Engineer in 1989. And he was in that post all the way until 2021, at a time of his untimely death. That's a long time. Now, let me tell you, over that time period, some of the changes that occurred here in this township, including major, major road work. Route 113. Route 113 used to be two 11-foot paved roadways with an 11-foot stone shoulder. That's what 113 was. Look at 113 today. Route 100, I'm sure many of you know Route 100. Turnpike interchange used to be a T-intersection. There used to be a guy with a hot dog stand up on the other side of it, too. That was pretty famous. We actually made Channel 6 News on that one. And the widening of Route 100, the widening of Route 113, the changing out of the bridge on Route 113. And I can go on, I can go on. We can talk about the initial trail system. The initial trail system in Chester County, right here in Euclid Township. How many miles of trail we have now? It's probably, I don't know, you probably know better than I would. But, I mean, all these things. You can look at Ted and you can say that he had a hand in the vast majority of it, but I think the thing that would be good for Ted tonight would be on his behalf to thank various people. Ellen, I can tell you that on more than one occasion, Ted would tell me, this is Ted's wife, Ellen, sitting over here, trying to hide right now. He would say to me that the secret to his success was you.
No.
And he would relate to me the story of him in 11th grade at his high school up in northeast Pennsylvania, where he was second to last in his class in 11th grade. And then obviously he changed and then he became a graduate of that wonderful institution in central Pennsylvania, Penn State. Go Lions. Just remember that. She's a Michigan grad, so Michigan people, anyway. And he, he got his degree, obviously, in civil engineering and he became an engineer. And Ellen, there you go. Thank you. No, he'd want to thank you, Danny, you, Kristen, Dawn, and anybody else who was down there that was helping all those years with all these projects that went through this township. I tell you, the tens of millions of dollars that we were able to get through the state to do these roadway projects. You two, thank you very much. Also, staff people. You know he was with you how many times, and you as well, Tara, and Bruce. We make a lot of fun of you, as we should, because we still all don't know what the hell you do here.
Everything, everything.
And then Scott as well here. So Ted and I have known each other, know each other from, like, basically, like I said, from 1983 until that is untimely death. And Art, you're sitting in the back there, you knew him as well, because Art was engineer at Downingtown Township. For how many years? Many years. Joe Frame, School District, you knew him as well. Charlie Clemson, Chairman of our Planning Commission, Danny Martin, you guys all know him, and you knew him. And I'm going to sum him up, but I'm going to say one more thing before I sum up. And it's a big, big thank you to the Board of Supervisors of this township. Because without you guys saying, yes, we're going to go forward with this, this would not have happened. So, thank you very much.
We deserve that.
I have to read. My mind is like a sieve anymore. Anyway, this is a quote from Ralph Waldo Emerson, and I think it fits Ted to a T. And he said, "The purpose of life is not to be happy. It is to be useful, to be honorable, to be compassionate, to have it make some difference that you have lived and lived well." And I think that hits Ted square on the dot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug, thank you. Thank you, Doug. And also I just wanted to add that Ted was, threw up the first plans for this senior park. So he will be a member of this park for many things and we hope that senior citizens can enjoy the park starting this summer and just spend time with their friends, exercising, socializing, and pursuing happiness, which is not in the quote, but so wanted to invite the family and Juliana. If you guys want to go home and celebrate, you're welcome to, because we have a the rest of the meeting is not going to be as exciting. So, um, thank you so much for coming tonight and congratulations again. Oh yeah, take a picture, for sure. No, go ahead.
You, you put your time in.
Get in there, Jamie.
Thank you so much.
Lighting's not very good over there.
No. Oh yeah, the lights aren't on, the, the backlights aren't on.
Yeah.
The lights.
I don't really want to.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
That's fine. Oh yeah, no, it's important.
Thank you so much. Some of Doug's, I'm seeing.
We know how he is, tells us stories about Doug.
All right.
Okay. Okay. If I could get everyone's attention. Thank you very much. The next item of business, we have some appointments to make to the Planning Commission and to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, just is it about the presentation about Ted Giacomis? Oh yeah, go ahead. Well, it's specifically designed, it's specifically designed for seniors. There's exercise equipment to help, you know, your flexibility and strength, and also pickleball courts. There'll be a bocce ball court. There's a specially-designed swing that is a swing that friends can get on together. So you can swing with your friends and talk, like a family swing with your grandkids. There'll be a little walking trail. Is that so funny? I don't know.
Yeah, I can't.
Yeah, so specifically designed for activities for seniors. Yes, okay. Are there any other questions about the senior park before we move on?
Yeah.
Okay. The swing is very fun. Okay, so back to the appointments for the Planning Commission. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bill McGlocklin and Mike Freed to the Planning Commission. Can I get a second?
One second.
Any comments or questions? No. Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Welcome, Bill McGlocklin and Mike Freed to the Planning Commission as ex-official members. And then I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bill LaBarge to the Parks and Rec Committee. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Welcome to Bill LaBarge to the Park and Rec Committee. And I just want to say thanks to everybody who stepped up to submit an application to volunteer for our committees. We have lots of committees that are fully run by volunteers and we appreciate all their work that they do dedicated to the township and all of its endeavors, so thank you. Uh, next up, next item of business is ratifying amendment of operation and maintenance agreement for the operation of the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant. Mr. Greenlee?
Right, thank you. So, as noted earlier in the Public Works Report, the township is serviced by two wastewater treatment plants. The Downingtown Area Regional Plant, as well as the Eagleview Treatment Plant, uh, which is owned and operated by the township. Uh, the township contracted with EMA to operate that facility for us. They've done a great job over the years. Um, as the plant is aging, we have decided that it's, it's needed for them to be there more. Currently, the EMA is there for one three-hour period, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday. We would like to increase that, so they're there in the morning and the evening, Monday through Friday. So we entered into this agreement beginning in May, but I'm asking the board to ratify that for moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to ratify the amendment of the Operation and Maintenance Agreement for the operation of Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant?
So moved.
A second.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Are there any comments or questions from the public? No, they'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next item of business, we have two resolutions. Wait, isn't there just one? Oh, never mind. It's under resolutions, but it's just one. Okay. Revision to Resolution 2023-10, Downingtown High School East, 50 Devon Drive, Preliminary Final Land Development Plan.
Uh, yes, so as you will recall, Downingtown Area School District submitted a land development plan for in addition to the high school, as well as some traffic improvements on Devon Drive. Uh, the plan was approved in February at the board meeting with the Resolution 2023-10. When we were reviewing the final plan for recording, we did notice a discrepancy on the notes. Uh, so the new Resolution 2023-14 is just to reflect that.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 20, the revision to Resolution 2023-10 for Downingtown High School East? And so it'll be Resolution, never mind, one second. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-14, which is the revision to Resolution 2023-10 for Downingtown High School East?
So moved.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next up, ordinances. First, we have our hearing. What's with the court reporters here? Uh, for the hotels, motels, and ends maintenance regulations, Mr. Freed?
So this, this will be relatively brief, although I know we have some public here that want to provide comment, which is fine. Um, we, um, we had started the hearing at the last meeting at the request of one of the hotels. We continued it over this meeting. We did receive some written comments from both the requested that it asked to be continued. Uh, we heard some verbal comments at the, at the last meeting, and also some other written comments. The township has decided, based on those comments, to revise the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. Uh, so what they are going to do is, rather than moving forward with the, the version that they have, is present a rewritten ordinance circulated to the public, circulated to the impacted hotels. Hotels, motels, and ends. And then we advertise the meeting for June, so it will be an opportunity to have a hearing, another hearing on the revised or new ordinance for the hotel uh, motels and ends. So we're not going to proceed further with this hearing, other than if there is any public comment that folks would like to make, or if the board has any comment, we will take that. Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Hetzel. I'm the General Manager of the Hampton Inn in Exton, and I spoke at the last meeting, so thank you for your time. I just, I forwarded a letter about a number of things we were concerned about. I didn't know if you, did you want me to reiterate that or just?
It's up to you, whatever you, whatever you're comfortable.
Okay, of the six things, the first one was the call for ratio. We found that was vague and undefined and, you know, are we talking rooms? I mean, because you also have occupancy too, so you could have 100 rooms and five filled, or 100 rooms and all filled. So, you know, there's some variances there. Also, we recommended a two-to-three-year renewal instead of a one, simply because of the cost of operations for hoteliers and for the township too. It's, that's a lot of cost. Uh, Section 7, uh, we thought that the ordinance ought to really read to include all short-term rentals, because that isn't just hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts. It's Airbnb and VRBOs. So, and those are the ones that really don't have any fire inspection. People can check in anonymously in and out for any length of time. And, um, the American Hotel and Lodging Association in recent years has found that over 60% of human trafficking, drug trafficking, and crime is occurring in those, because hotels are doing a much better job of trying to be aware of human trafficking and drug problems with our daily inspections. So they're moving into an area that is really, it's uncovered and undefined, unregulated, so something to think about. The next part was, uh, you know, under recommending serving the licensee with notice of hearing. We said to recommend 60 days instead of 10 days between vacation, scheduling, operations, and just trying to plan a family event takes more than 10 days. So, you know, we thought that might be more viable. And, uh, the fifth one is to remove the cost of prosecution for each offense and shall be incarcerated, because is that, are you arresting the owners, the investors, the GM? I mean, it's sort of undefined, and I think, I think a fine is probably, probably enough to motivate people. And the last thing is that we recommend six months from the date of enactment, so that we would have time to get operations and everything. In order to be compliant with this ordinance, we get operations and everything. In order to be compliant with this ordinance, we, we want to be compliant on all points. And the last thing is, I've been a GM over 20 years at the Hampton Inn here, and I'd be happy to provide the hotelier's perspective as you're taking the time to, to rewrite this. We have been an outstanding hotel, according to Hilton's rules, many times, which means we're super compliant with all of Hilton demands for safety, um, inspections and everything like that. So I would, I'd be happy to volunteer my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on the hotel motel in ordinance? Is there any board comment?
Not at this time.
All right, so with that, we'll, we'll close this hearing. Um, and we will re-advertise, but I'll announce tonight also that the intention, uh, is to, uh, have it at the, at the June, uh, meeting. If for some reason that doesn't happen, the advertisement will indicate otherwise. Um, and, uh, thank you.
So I'll go ahead and, um, ask for a motion for motion to re-advertise 2023-03 Hotels, Motels, and Ends Maintenance Regulations Ordinance.
Second.
Any comments, questions? No?
No.
Any comments from the public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, item number six, under business, the YMCA Conditional Use Decision. You want to take that, Mr. Freed?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So at the, at the last, uh, township meeting, uh, there was a conditional use hearing. Um, a number of folks I, I recognize, or a number of, uh, folks that participated in that. Um, the board tonight, uh, is going to make a decision on that. Then that, just for a little background, um, this involves, um, the YMCA of Greeter, uh, Brandywine was requesting an amendment to prior conditional use approvals necessary to convert an existing outdoor swimming pool area into a multipurpose activity area for pickleball, basketball, and shuffleboard, and properties located at 100 Devon Drive in Exton. So the, the, the board obviously can, can approve, can deny, can, can approve with conditions. Um, the, the recommendation is that if the board is so inclined to approve, um, that they include conditions that, um, in but may not necessarily be limited to the following. Uh, the fence surrounding the exterior multipurpose activity area be 10-foot high along the northwest and south sides, uh, with acoustic fence or similar product approved by the township, to be erected on a fence in order to mitigate noise. Uh, the fence not exceed past the exterior walls of the building into the designated front or side yard. The township review the project for any additional noise concerns and require a noise study, or, uh, at least reserve the right to require a noise study and/or additional noise mitigation measures if necessary. Additionally, the use of noise mitigation panels and balls for pickleball be explored by the applicant. That the hours of operation of the multipurpose activity area be limited to, uh, from 9:00 AM prevailing time to dusk the same day. However, pickleball, uh, conclude no later than 7:00 PM or dusk, whichever is earlier, and pickleball be limited to a four-hour period per day. Uh, and also restricting that, uh, no pickleball tournaments occur on the multi-activity area. That, uh, pedestrian access from Devon Drive onto the site be constructed as, uh, indicated in the conditional use plan set that was, uh, prepared by how engineering was presented during the hearing, uh, as Exhibit A9, which shows a three-foot wide sidewalk between the existing curb and detention basin along the crosswalk to connect the proposed sidewalk to the existing sidewalk. Um, that the plan be reviewed by the township engineer during the permit process and modified as directed by the township engineer. And in addition, the applicant repaint the existing crosswalk that is parallel to Devon Drive and connects the island to the sidewalk at the property main vehicle entrance. And the board could also add additional conditions. There were a number of review letters that would need to be complied with, uh, and the like. Um, so those are the recommendations if, if the board is inclined to, um, approve the conditional use.
Okay. Is there a motion, uh, for the conditional use decision?
So moved.
To to approve it, or?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay. Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the board? About any of the ambitions?
Sure, I, I, I just had some broad comments that I wanted to share. Um, I realize we received a lot of comments from the neighbors immediately adjacent to this property concerning, uh, the noise that could be created by pickleball and how it might affect the adjacent residential areas. Um, I do believe that the conditions that are laid out both will limit the noise, present additional options for the applicant to explore, such as the, the quieter balls and paddles to be used. Um, and especially the criteria that the township reserves the right to revisit and perform or ask for a noise study if necessary, um, will give us the tools should a problem present to further explore this issue and how we can mitigate it. I'm also very appreciative of the pedestrian improvements that are going in to provide better access into that area. Um, we shared before, you know, I know our high school kids and our middle school kids utilize that facility. It's in an excellent location for our families to get to, and these improvements will increase um, their accessibility and their safety there. And so I'm very appreciative that those were included in this process. Um, I think that's about it.
Okay.
I think just a or silently. Sorry. So, yeah, I, I fully endorse, uh, this, this chair, Abensky's comments. Um, I think, uh, I think I want to clarify that the, the, the decision in front of us was not whether or not to open a pool. That was, you know, that's a decision by the YMCA, so our decision was limited to whether, what's next, um, what can, what can we allow? And I, I think we definitely heard the residents concerned about the noise, um, primarily is, is, is the concern, although there are some others. Um, but I think the, like, like, like Ms. Abensky said, I think the, um, noise mitigation uh, options that are being required to begin with, uh, with the option to, to follow up on those if they're unsatisfactory. Um, give us, you know, give us some confidence that this will not be as intrusive as, as feared. And I, I agree, and I'm actually quite excited about the improvement on the sidewalk. I, you know, that, that area, even though it's separate from the project, they were, the YMCA was willing to make those improvements, given the the high amount of foot traffic from, from teenagers and, and younger, um, coming from the middle school and high school, uh, you know, between two and four every day, and I think that, uh, has been a concern, and it, it matches, um, the improvements that the school district is doing along Devon Drive. Um, we're really focusing on trying to make that a safer corridor for our children, um, who are, you know, at the age where they're not supervised any longer, but, you know, are not maybe at the age where they're fully cognizant of all the dangers of the, of the road. So those, those are some of the factors. And so I'm, I think this is a fair, fair decision, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Sure, if you could just come up and state your name and your street.
Hi, Karen Kohler, 85 Devon Drive. Um, you, uh, you said that they, you're limiting it to four hours a day. Is there any way the Y is going to be able to, like, alter those hours? Do they set a time and stick with it, or will they, you know, demand, you know, increase that time, or if it's too hot in the middle of the day, are they going to start letting them play like seven, you know, later in the afternoon, in the evening, when we're trying to relax outside? Those are my concerns.
Okay, I, I do believe that the YMCA said that there didn't have a specific time set for pickleball, but that they would definitely, I mean, according to these conditions, they would have to stop playing pickleball after dusk or 7:00 PM, whichever comes sooner, and limit it to four hours a day. So they can't go, I mean, they could come back, I guess, and ask for it, but
They would need to amend the conditional use at that point. But, but there's, so there's two, there's two separate conditions that are being proposed. One is that it has to be limited to four hours, and then the second is it can't go later than 7:00 PM or dusk. So the, the four hour could move during the day, but it can never go later than 7:00 PM or dusk, whichever comes sooner.
It, it's still a concern, because the, it, it's dinner time. We, you know, we cook out, we want it to sit out and enjoy. So I, I still have concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could just come up to the microphone. Ha, ha, ha. If you could just say your name and your street.
Mike Semenetti. I live on Horn Place. Okay. First of all, I'm, I'm interested in knowing how they're going to monitor the four hours. If somebody comes in at 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock, are they going to keep track of that? So then if somebody comes from 2:00 to 4:00, that's four hours. And then if somebody comes at, after that, they're going to say, no, you cannot go there after that, because we already did four hours. I don't believe they're going to do that. I'd like to know how they're going to do that. And if they don't do that, does that mean they violated it, and now therefore you will remove the pickleball? I just don't know how that's going to work. If, if, and I'd be interested in hearing the, 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 why, how they're going to enforce that.
Go ahead.
I know, if they're out of compliance, I mean, we can, we would deal with ours any officer, and, and they would have to become in compliance now. Uh, no, or, or I'll do it. Okay, no, my point is the, the, th- this is a condition. This isn't them like, hey, it would be nice for you to hide that. So if there's complaints that are going beyond that four hours, and they should be reported at the township, and we would have to make them go into compliance, or they're not following the conditional use and can't operate the
It's, it's part of the code. It's part of the zoning code. There's enforcement. I appreciate. It's like, it's like everything else. I mean, enforcement's always, enforcement can always be tricky. I mean, there's no question about it. Be out there for a couple of days and then a monitor, see if there's more than four hours, to be honest with you. The second, uh, thing that you've mentioned is as far as getting a township, I mean, so, uh, getting a, uh, engineer to do a sound study. I can tell you right now, I don't care if it's a six-foot wall or a 10-foot wall, it's not going to mitigate the sound. The main fact is that you have that tall wall, which is the building. It's going to echo off of that and reverberate that and go well over this, the, that six-foot wall. I just know that's the case, having experience with this kind of thing. So again, if it shows that the, those things that they're putting in does not work, then it should be removed. I feel bad that they're going to go through all the effort of putting this in, and they should probably have somebody provide a study before this to make sure that it's, it's not wasting their time, their money, and it's not going to create hardship amongst the, uh, the, the residents to have to go through the whole process of stopping you. So.
I would just say the YMCA could do a sound study whenever they want to. Um, the conditions do lay out that if there continue to be noise problems, complaints, that we can require them to do a noise study.
I would say there's engineers who are noise engineers who can tell you before this is project even takes place, whether the, the things that they're proposing will work.
Sure.
It seems to me that'd be the smart thing to do, have them give you a study. It doesn't require a whole lot. It's just proof. I just know that there's proof that's out there that this does not going to be effective to have a six-foot wall or a 10-foot wall. So if they, if they think they, they're guaranteed that this is going to work, let them get the proof from, from a noise, uh, what do you call it, engineers proof. So, that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there any other comments about the YMCA Conditional Use Decision?
I'm Benjamin Joseph, and I'm at 306 William Salisbury Drive. And I, I have to agree with Mr. Simonetti that, um, that, as I mentioned in the last, in, in the conditional use hearing, um, the, the township ordinance is required that, uh, YMCA approved beforehand that it's not going to cause harm to residents. So I, I would have thought that the, the board would have wanted to get a sound study before the pickleball courts are constructed. And I also think that the Y, YMCA, it, it presented no evidence at all that it, it's not going to, uh, cause noise pollution and harm to the neighbors. In fact, I submitted a, a, a study to, to the board supervisors that showed in a similar project in West, Westport, that the impulse noise from pickleball would be over 80 decibels at a home in a similar location um, to 85 Devon Drive, which is across from the Y. But, but aside from that, I, I think that the, the pool is really a valuable resource that already exists, and the township itself, um, provided funding for this pool. Now, the, the indoor pool, the township provided $500,000 to, for its construction, and, um, unfortunately, I requested records from the township for the outdoor pool, but, um, apparently those are, are missing, or, 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 or they're gone. But, um, I believe that many, many residents have, uh, have told me that the, the outdoor pool was constructed with funding for the township, and it serves low-income and middle-income residents of Euclid Township with an affordable, uh, outdoor pool membership. Uh, I think you also should know that the, the YMCA didn't present any reasons, uh, that its pickleball courts won't cause noise, but it also, its reasons, uh, for um, closing the pool also really have no merit. The, the, the Y said that the, the pool, uh, is too expensive to, to repair, but in fact, it only needs uh, 10-year maintenance that it's been putting off for, uh, for maybe five years. Now, I knew, I knew quite a while ago that, uh, it needed this maintenance, and, um, if it had done it before the pandemic, it could have been paid for by the aquatics program with the Y, which I don't know if you're, you're aware of this, but the aquatics program, the Y, before the pandemic, it was one of the, uh, the best ones in the YGBW. The, 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 that team won a state championship in 2016. And now, uh, with the pandemic, uh, the, the the, the aquatics program is really a fraction of its size. And so, um, I really think that the YMCA has a long history of favoring other branches over Euclid's branch, which goes back to, uh, the, the closure of Lineville Satellite Eagleview Facility. The outdoor pool here was targeted for closure in 2021, when it was kept closed, even as the YGBW's other outdoor pools were reopened after the pandemic. Lineville's pool was only reopened in 2022 with a high outdoor pool fee, whose stated purpose was to decrease usage as a COVID prevention measure. Now the YMCA is citing the same decrease as a reason to demolish the pool.
Excuse me, Dr. Joseph. I'm sorry. We are limiting comments to three minutes, but also, um, as was stated earlier, that this decision doesn't really have anything to do with whether or not the YMCA provides a pool for its patrons or pickleball courts for its patrons. That's not under our purview.
I understand that. I went, I wanted to point out that because the, uh, township provided the funding for the pool, likely the, uh, township has, does have the ability to approve or deny the, uh, YMCA to demolish the pool. That's for the indoor pool. See, I have the records for that, for the indoor pool. The township would have to improve.
My understanding is, and this was long ago, but correct me if I'm wrong, if, uh, someone from the township knows any different, but that the YMCA gave out free community passes to residents in return for that initial funding in excess of the $500,000 that township offered. So, but the residents of the township recoup that money and then some for free passes to the pool.
That, those were
Or into the, the YMCA.
For the indoor pool. I, um, I have, as I said, I asked for, for information about the outdoor pool, but that was apparently missing. And also I do
Excuse me, let me ask Mrs., Mrs. Jo Donal to comment on that.
I would just say, um, we did go through all of the files for the YMCA, and the only records that we had for any funding, I guess, were for the indoor pool. We had nothing for the outdoor pool.
Okay, so there we have it. So do you have any other comments directly related to the conditional use decision?
Well, I, I suppose that I've, I've, I've said what I wanted to say about the conditional
Thank you. Are there any other? Are there any other comments from the public about the conditional use decision, the YMCA? Nope. If you could come up to the microphone and tell your name and, and street number, sorry, just for our minutes. Yep.
My name is Judy Hogaboom. I'm in Eagleview, but I just had a couple of questions. So, um, if they're requesting a sound study before the decision is made, what would be the challenge in doing that? Why would, why couldn't that be implemented?
It could have been a condition. We chose not to make that a condition. We It could have been a condition. We chose not to make that a condition. We instead decided to impose the conditions of an initial sound mitigation, you know, fence, acoustic fence to be put up and to see how that went, because a sound study was not something that the YMCA was looking to do right away.
So let me, let me, hang on, hold on, folks.
It seems logical.
So let me, let me, I might be able to. So there's there's a couple of things. Well, whenever you do a sound study on something that's not built yet, you're basically modeling, right? And you get three different experts that come into a room and they're going to do three different models and they're going to show three different things. What the board chose to do, at least what they're, what the recommendation was, is to actually go ahead with the the Y didn't want to put up any sound mitigation or very minimal sound mitigation. What the board said is we want sound mitigation. There's there's a wall on one side and there's three sides of fence. We want sound mitigation on all three sides of the fence, regardless of what a sound study showed. They want the sound mitigation to begin with. Then on top of that, the board said, and we want to reserve the right that if it turns out that's not enough, we need to, we want to be able to come back and tell you, you need to do a further sound study.
Right. So so we so we had already decided that the sound that their original.
And they, and and by the way, disputes, I mean, the Y were, they're not here tonight, but I think, but but they're they dispute that it's going to create noise and they feel that they did present evidence that it's not going to create noise, but there is, I mean, there's a difference of opinion and that's part of what this is.
But the residents feel pretty strongly like they they would like to have some reassurance that they're not going to be adversely impacted.
So like, like Mr. Freed said, like, the the original plan was we're just going to put pickleball courts. And we 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 could have said, well, you need to do a sound study on that. We said, no, we're going to go to your mitigation step first. Like, we're not even, we don't even need to see it because we don't buy that it's not going to be annoying. You have to put up sound walls. You have to do other, you know, and under these specifications, we get to approve the materials that are used. So it's not as if we said, you know what? Go go see what happens and then we'll come back. We said, no, this is a potential problem and we're going to make you mitigate it even before you have one game played on the surface. So then we have a condition in here saying, and if that is not enough, after doing what we think is, you know, a significant amount of mitigation, which probably would have been the next step after a sound study anyway, we will do additional and additional mitigation, or we will have to, you know, talk about whether they can go forward. So you know, not, we could have, like, like Mr. Freed said, we could have had done a sound study, but what would the results would have said is you need to do mitigation efforts. And we just said, let's just do the mitigation efforts and see what happens. And you know, so I think we did the step that we would have done if we had a negative sound study. And and that's that's my position at least.
And so ultimately, you'll do a sound study if the mitigation efforts don't show to be.
That could be, might be one of our options depending on the complaints.
That with the Y or the township have to pay.
Why would, why would play for that?
And then you would pick, who would pick the?
They would, they would, but we'd, our engineers would review it. Well, I mean, you can't, you can't tell someone you have to pay for it and and we get to pick it and we get to choose the person, but you have to pay for it and you have to do it. I mean, you know, you you have to be, I mean, everyone's entitled to fairness. The public's entitled to fairness and the applicants' entitled to fairness. And you have to be fair to both sides. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Well, it sounds like you have been, right? In that you're going through a mitigation step. And if that fails and you have proof that it fails, then they should be willing to pay for an effective sound study because you've already done your.
Absolutely. And and I will tell you, and I don't think I'm speaking out of school to say this, they're not particularly happy about the amount of sound fencing we're requiring because it's pretty expensive. But the board felt it was appropriate and necessary. And again, the the idea is rather than model something that doesn't exist, it's better to have something that you can then actually physically look at and test.
And it and it shuts down no later than seven o'clock and.
Seven o'clock or and as the sun starts going down earlier, it would be even earlier than that. And that's for the pickleball.
Sorry. But I feel like the residents.
Good questions. No, good questions.
Are there, is there another comment? Sure, come on up.
Can I ask?
You sure? Just go ahead.
So I'm wondering how much time we're we have to wait for to determine whether we're going to do the sound test or whatever. Is it going to be months or like how long?
Would depend on complaints received to the township about noise. I mean, we don't know yet if the noise mitigation features that we are requiring right now are going to mitigate all the noise or if they're not.
So there's no set time.
Yeah, and one of the, I mean, the the and and this actually, I think, works in in the residents' favor. There was some initial thought about saying after six months, after three months, and and then the recommend we and staff and internally talking about it internally said, you know, we we really shouldn't put a timeframe on it. We shouldn't have a a minimum time because bad, we don't want to be stuck for another two months. So the decision was made not to recommend having a set time. But I I would say you want to give it a little bit of time. But the the idea was to not set a set time so you're not stuck. If it if it turns out to be really bad, you don't want to say, gee, our hands are tied for the next five months.
Thank you.
Sure, come on up. If you could just.
Coleman, and I live in Eagleview too. So there are pickleball courts. I'm not sure who owns them or who manages in Eagleview, and you can hear those balls all the way at the apartments. So unless you have some sort of maybe study somewhere else where putting up that sound barrier actually works, that might end up being a massive expense and a lot of ill will on the part of the township if it's very noisy. So I don't know if you can find that information somewhere to see that a ten foot sound barrier actually means anything.
Yeah, well, the the company that, obviously, it's the company that produces it. So, you know, take it for what it's worth. But the company that produces it does have spec specifications. It is actually the the one that we specifically mentioned. We didn't limit it to them. The staff has talked to a a number of of different entities and and that that it's it's that's the the industry standard right now for people who do put up the sound barriers, but there may be other products out there. So that's why we didn't limit it.
My other comment is this. So the YMCA is putting up a major facility for pickleball off of Skelp Level Road. So it's not like there isn't going to be a place for people to play pickleball. There's many pickleball courts available now. So why would we want to disturb that neighborhood?
That that was the YMCA's decision.
I know.
Totally right, yeah.
And township's decision to take care of its residents and if they're going to be listening to all the time, I don't know. You know, it's not like there's not another place to play to play pickleball. And it's.
At the senior park.
Your citizens who play on those pickleball courts.
No, it's not limited to senior citizens.
Right. So there's more pickleball courts. I don't, that's my feeling. I think it's going to be a big disturbance.
Right. Again, that was the YMCA's decision. It doesn't really have anything to do with us. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
I know there has been.
Sorry, if I would be quiet so that we can hear the person talking, that would be great. If you could just say your name and your street, please.
Celia Joseph, and I live on Old William Salisbury. And there's been a lot of discussion about the pickleball. And I know there are a lot of different options and and we've heard a lot about that, but nobody's actually said how wonderful the pool is. I go there with my grandchildren and see them swimming and this and all the other kids that are there and enjoying it. It has a real impact on the community. It's a very fine.
I know. And let me just say this. I have kids. My kids all went to the pool. I'm very disappointed the Y is choosing to get rid of the pool. And we've heard a lot of comments from residents. Unfortunately, we don't have control over what the YMCA provides. We did support them putting in a pool, which is why we gave the initial funding. The community, you know, we felt that that was a plus for the community. As far as, you know, them taking away the outdoor part of the pool, we don't have any control over what they provide their I want to say residents because that's what I who I work for. They're members.
There is not any real choice.
We don't have any recourse for, you know, telling, can't, just we can't tell target, you know, if they can carry my favorite kind of hand soap, but you just can't. We can't tell them. We could support.
Well, even if we, even if we denied this, we can't make them open the pool. We can't make them hire lifeguards. We can't make them do the repairs. We can't make, so they could leave that as just an empty pool if they decide it's not worth money to do. So this was never about whether, we're not evaluating their business decision on the opening the pool. We're not evaluating like rather like, like like Spam and I have kids, we've we've gone to that pool. I'm a member, so I get it, but that's not the choice in front of us and we really can't make a decision on what we, we can't tell them to keep the pool open. Ms. Svensky's.
It's a foregone conclusion. They're telling you what's going to have to happen and we have to.
I mean, we 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 whether whether or not we approve this use and or we say, come back with another idea. They don't have to open the pool. They do not have to open the pool. We can't make them open the pool. And so and I know this isn't the only branch that is closing their pool. The and again, I'm not commenting on the wisdom of the plan. That's that's up to the board of YMCA to decide what what pools to open. And I'm sorry about that. I I I'm going to miss the pool. Sorry.
Yeah. All right. Sorry, I have to jump in. We can't talk about pools and me not say something. I I just want to say I hear your concerns about the pool. Dr. Joseph, you addressed the aquatics program through the YMCA. The pool has been a treasure in our community for many years. My daughter's a competitive swimmer. I live at the pool. I I I hear you and I feel you and like my fellow board members have said, unfortunately, that's not the matter that's before the board at this moment to decide. I think that's a separate conversation our community can have if that's a facility that we want to attract in Euclid Township. I'm happy to support that and that's a completely separate matter. But I just wanted to say I I do hear your concerns and we all have kids and we all have, we we heard several stories from many of you about memories with grandkids and kids learning to swim and all that. And I and I hear you and I just don't want you to think that we're not addressing that because we don't care. We care a lot. It's just not the matter that's that's before us.
Need to say no.
But I thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You're a crazy pool lady. I had to say.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The memories from it. I'll keep.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments for the YMCA? Someone hasn't spoken yet?
Hi, Maria Marino from Horn Place. And I guess I don't understand how you're going to approve this conditional use after approved for a conditional use to have a pool. But you're going to say it's okay that they can do four hours a day, but you don't, you're not saying how they're managing the four hours a day? And then you're going to let them pick out what, you know, without any review of how they're going to do this sound management? I think if you ever came up on our street and anybody lives on our street could tell you that the noise that comes out of there is unbelievable. There's just constant this weekend, there was, there was kids playing. I don't know what they were doing, but they had a generator over there and and they were playing in the the field right beside our house and they, we left our house at eleven o'clock in the morning because it was loud. We came back at five, they were still there. The noise is unbelievable and I think it's going to be even louder with pickleball. And I think you, how can you approve something without having all the details about how this is going to be managed? We need to know how you're going to manage it so we know what what to expect.
Any other comments?
Kathy Graham, Watch Hill Road. I I just have one comment and and I guess one question. Seems to me that the putting up the walls and waiting three months and responding to complaints, we don't know how many complaints are required to trigger this sound study, but putting up the walls and then the sound study triggered by complaints, and we don't know how many complaints that would be, is like putting a cart before the horse and, you know, and then and then what is, what is the repercussions to the Y? If the sound study comes back and says it's a hundred decibels, which is way over what the township would allow. And they say, well, but that's only when you hit the ball. When you don't hit the ball, it's zero decibels. So so how to get figure that out? And gentleman who talked before is right. You put vertical walls up, sound's going to go up and be dispersed that way. But how many complaints trigger this sound study? Why did they get to pick a sound study? That's like with Dragon Pipe when when they let them decide who was going to do the study of the the ground surface and stuff. And and then they don't pay for the emergency stuff that's required. It's like walk quickly in the opposite direction. What about the people in wheelchairs? Don't turn on your phone. Don't turn off your phone. Don't start your car. Start your car. The whole thing is crazy, telling them build a wall and then we'll do a sound study triggered by X amount of complaints, which we don't know how many that is, and to whom those are addressed is backwards, totally backwards.
So can I, can I, so so what we would do, this 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 is a situation where there's a, there's the sounds are problem immediately. We would get complaints into the township, okay? And what we would do is we wouldn't wait for a specific number. We would have, we would go out, several of us would go out. And this is what we did with other issues, but several of us would go out and listen to the sound and determine how bad is this? So we wouldn't need, I don't need a number. I just need like, oh, there's a problem with the.
Legally, you need to know.
No, I don't. No, this is what is, no, we can go out and then we can assess the sound. And we can determine this is outrageous or this is, you know, different degrees. Oh, yeah, but that's nonsense. I mean, if they tried to make that, but if they tried to make that argument, I'd say you're 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 just, you're, you know, bullshit. It's like, forget it. Like, this is an obnoxious sound that's coming through like as as a ping. And it's too much. And that's we just say that. And so you can make it, they can make a crazy, yes, they could make a crazy excuse. And we would just say, no, that that doesn't.
Go through all of this if you made them do the sound.
Yeah, well, that's, but that's a fine point. But we have options of doing.
I I also don't want to two points. One is, and again, I understand there's a disagreement. There's a difference of opinion. They don't think they need a sound study at all. Okay. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this board, what's being recommended is that they do the mitigation, not only do a sound study, right? Do the mitigation now with without a sound study, do the correction. If if the correction doesn't do it, they're leaving open the option of saying then we now we need more of a study and now we need more correction.
Think if they had any brains about them, they'd want to do the sound study first.
Okay. Are there any anyone else that has a comment that hasn't spoken yet? Is there anyone else who has a comment that has not raised it yet about the YMCA conditional use? Do you have one more comment?
I saw some.
I'm sorry. Can you come back up here? I can't hear you. I think it's louder in person. It's definitely louder in person.
Literally, two hundred feet from where this is. Okay. That's, that's what it sounds like. Just wanted to say that. The other thing is, they're not going to make the use quieter balls or quieter rackets. I know the business. I've talked to people. I said, why don't you do that? So you don't get sued all over the country. It's not going to happen, they tell me. Well, and I and I don't disagree with that. I I think we asked them to look at that. I, first of all, people are going to come with their own rackets and their own balls. So it's a.
Ask people to be quiet, please. Well.
But that that would be difficult to enforce, but we at least said, take a look at it, see if it's feasible. But the main, the the main mitigation, and and I understand your concern, but the main mitigation is at least to start with these sound fences. Good luck.
We're not going to let it become a nuisance to the residents around it. That's.
Noise owners just tell if it disturbs the the residents, it's illegal.
That's right. Yeah.
So if that happens and you see this, then I want it shut down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, if there aren't any more comments or questions, oh. What's that? I think we're ready to call the vote. Um, all in favor of approving a conditional use decision for the YMCA? Alright, alright, motion passes. That was unanimous. Motion passes.
Alright, so there will be a written decision. It will be mailed out to all the parties. Um, and I don't know.
It'll be up on the website as well, right?
It's on the website tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
I would also just like to note that the YMCA does have 10 days to accept the conditions. Um, or the conditional use is denied.
Did everybody hear that?
The, the YMCA has 10 days to accept the conditions. Otherwise, um, the application's denied.
Right, so the Y could say these conditions are too onerous for them and they don't wanna do them anyway. Um, and then in which case it wouldn't be an approval. It would be essentially a denial and they probably challenge it at that point. Um, but that's, so they, they have 10 days to accept these conditions.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna move on to the announcements. All meetings will be at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. On May 9th, Community Day Committee will be here at 7:00 PM. On May 11th, the Historical Commission will meet at 7:30 PM at Cadwalader House. Uh, May 16th is Primary Election Day and the Township offices will close here at noon because there will be voting here. On May 17th, the Zoning Hearing Board will meet at 7:00 PM to review C and J Auto. On eight, 181 Eagleby Boulevard for a sign variance and a multifamily apartment building on 529 West Euclid Avenue. On May 18th, the Environmental Advisory Council will meet here at 7:00 PM. On May 24th, we will begin, this, this is awesome, Yoga in the Park here at 9:30 AM in Baird Park. Uh, just bring a yoga mat or a towel or whatever. It's free and open to the public. So again, that starts on the 24th here at 9:30 AM. Uh, May 29th, Memorial Day, the Township offices will be closed. June 5th, uh, is the Board of Supervisors meeting. It's rescheduled from June 12th. So just take a note, it'll be on the 5th next month at 7:30 PM. June 7th, the Planning Commission will meet at 7:30 PM and June 8th, the Historical Commission will meet at 7:30 PM. Again, at the Cadwalader House. Now I'll go ahead and open up the meeting to any public questions or comments. And if anyone wants to, if they don't have a comment now, feel free to excuse yourself. We won't, we won't be insulted. If you could just come up and state, state your name.
My name's Art Rothie and I live on Schelmeyer Road. And I'm here about Jones Pond. For those people here don't know about Jones Pond, it's at the end of Dallin Forge Road. And the pipe that fed the pond washed out about a year and nine months ago. And so the pond just sits there stagnating. And, uh, I was here several months ago and I don't know what's happened about it, but I just noticed recently that the outlet pipe has been lowered. Like it's getting ready to be drained, the pond. And that's why I'm here to find out what the supervisors are gonna do.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, we were concerned about the water stagnating in there because there was the washout of the inlet water. So there was no new fresh water coming in there. Um, so our Parks Department, uh, and our engineer, we all went out and looked at it actually this last week. Um, and decided to lower that pipe just to drain out some of the water because we didn't want it to become a mosquito breeding habitat. And we really wanted to see what the bottom of the pond looked like. Um, and go from there. So we haven't made any decisions, decisions. We're just basically getting, getting more information by draining it and trying to protect the public from a smelly mosquito habitat. Wanna add something to that?
I was just gonna add that the pipe has not actually been lowered. The cap has broken, so.
Okay.
But we are very concerned about mosquitoes this time of year and, um, like Chairperson Bowman said, we are looking at options still. But, um, in the meantime, we don't wanna create a situation where there's excess mosquitoes or stagnant water.
Yeah, but that's been basically there for a year and nine months and the mosquitoes didn't occur last spring.
I can't comment on the amount of mosquitoes. I, I, I think what, what we're just trying to say is we're, we're taking this very seriously right now. We've been working with Dan Daly at EB Wash as well as our Parks Department. Um, this pond has been a, a, a picture in the, the community, but it's also been a maintenance issue for several years. Um, and the outlet pipe that drained into the pond had continuously been shifting as the stream shifted. Um, and when, uh, we had a significant rainfall, it shifted the stream quite a bit, which has left us in a situation where the natural feed for the water uh, is no longer in place. Um, we did verify what you, you said, Mr. Rothie, with the, the inlet pipe that's there that was feeding it. It was not picking up enough water to continually fill it. Uh, we were lucky last year in the sense that it started very dry, but then drained pretty much the rest of the summer, which kept the pond full and aerated. But, um, we, as I said earlier, we are still in a, not a drought, but we're in a two-inch deficit. Um, and if that doesn't change, then we, we would be potentially facing some issues there.
So what could I expect in the next month and so? Would I hear from you about what you're doing? Are you gonna meet with DEP to see if you can replace the pipe that was washed out?
We, we've been in discussions with the DEP as well as, uh, I believe Fishing Game for the fish that are in there. That's also a concern with the township. We, we do not want to see any, a fish kill there. So, um, I can't say that it'll be a month, but I, I, I can do our best to keep you informed as things go on, as well as the rest of the residents in the area.
Would you be opposed to me contacting DEP, meeting them out there?
I would say it's probably not, I mean, not necessary. We, I'm not gonna say you can't do anything, but we are gonna.
I just keep hearing different stories. And then, you know, the last story was that the township's decided to drain the pond and let it go back to a field or something.
We, we've never said that, I believe, um, but we are evaluating all options. I mean, there are several options that are available for the township moving forward.
Well, I would say that if you were to drain the pond, you're gonna have to come up with some other stormwater management. Because the pond does provide stormwater management for the downstream. You know, Downingtown and what have you that flooded out too.
Absolutely. And any, I mean, that's one of the things that is potentially being evaluated is a way to turn it into a positive feature to continue for stormwater management. We all know that, that creek does flood quite significantly sometimes and it does all drain towards our friends in the Downingtown borough. So it is, it's something we're looking at, um, but we have not decided in, on any option at this point.
And also I know in the past, when developers came in and developed things, they were required to do like park or rec stuff, like rebuild the old ruins and stuff down there along, you know, Dallin Forge Road. It may be nice that the next developer, you know, contribute to something to, uh, improve Jones Pond.
I mean, so, so just, uh, I know, I know a lot of people probably aren't aware, like last year, what, what was decided is even, even to ju- to dredge the pond and, and restore some of the basin of it, it was gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars. And then that didn't even restore the water flow. So this is, you know, we're, we're looking at it as, what can we find for a long-term solution? However, the, we fund it, because that was one way to fund it. But however we funded, we have to find a long-term solution for the pond. Because right now, as you say, it's, it's really in a situation where it's kind of been orphaned by the stream. Um, and now, uh, you know, we can't, you know, it's not an easy fix to, we mean, to, to return it because the stream shifted so, so much. I, I was actually walking there on Saturday, um, just to look at the, the situation. It's not, you know, just a shift of a couple of feet and, and, and we're, we're fine. This is a ma- a, a major change in the geography, in the local geography. So, uh, it's a significant fix. And we, we really need to think about what our options are. So we haven't decided anything. We certainly, there was no discussion, we, we, no decision to, to, to drain the pond. So I'm not sure where you heard that. It's not what.
Well, as soon as I heard that and saw that the top of the pipe was lowered, it was kinda like, they're doing it little by little.
So it's.
But you know, the pond's been there for forty-some years and you did, really didn't have any maintenance going on except for that one storm.
Except for that one storm made a big change. I don't know.
Mighty storm.
You spent millions of dollars elsewhere, you know, a hundred thousand, it doesn't seem like very much to me.
Let me know, a hundred thousand to dredge the pond, not to fix the situation.
Yeah.
That's the big difference, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I just wanted to be on the record.
Keep you, we'll keep you posted, we, we promise.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a list of people that signed up for public comment somewhere? It's in the vestibule? Okay, if that'll make it easier, I'll just call the names off the list and then we'll get to everybody else. Sorry. Alright, Ken, Ken Empy?
I wanna read the top three so people can line up.
Good evening.
I'll do that next time.
My name's Ken Empy, 487 Lionville Station Road. I'm not here to talk about Lionville Station Road tonight. I'm here to talk about the very similar condition, conditional uses that were required for the now-approved plan across the highway at the former Happy Days Farm. Many have been asking me with all the dialogue about Lionville Station, why this other site was approved? As it too required thirty times, they allowed, uh, forty thousand square foot, foot, footage footprint for building A. I'm pretty sure it also required the variance for the loading docks on both sides of the buildings, et cetera. I tell them that during COVID, major organizations, government and private, were completely in new territory with very little in-person participation. Everyone glued to their TV set or internet, looking at the latest COVID news. Perhaps people began, began to receive work from home, not be active in the, in the community. I was one of them. I knew nothing about this, although I live less than a mile from that spot. I can sympathize with Euclid trying to do their best to operate in the new world that we lived in over the past couple of years. However, I feel that there are a number of things wrong with this site. I really have not done my full research, but so far from what I've researched myself and from others on the research team, uh, that the conditional use was grandfathered in from years and years ago, taking a previously approved Vanguard conditional use for the total square footage among many stories of an office building and translating that into the number across a single-story warehouse littered with loading docks. Also, I question any traffic studies that were done during COVID. My wife and nurse could make it from our house on Lionville Station to West Minor Street in literally half the time with almost no traffic to contend with during almost two years of COVID. Again, I've not done my full homework and if I did, I would not get through it in three minutes. But I did learn of conditional use, that if a conditional use is granted to a developer and the builder does not commence work within one year, that Euclid retains the right to revisit this conditional use. Uh, is that true? I was just curious if that's true or not.
It is true. Um, when the applicant came through the conditional use, they did request a ten-year extension on that, which was granted.
Same year?
For construction, yes, for construction.
So, so, alright, so, so let, let me, can, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so just a, just a couple of things. And I'm, I'm gonna have to go back and look. I, I mean, I was here for both the conditional use and the land development. We were in this room. So it wasn't, I, I don't, I mean, we may have had some video, but I remember a number of hearings in person. I'm assuming it was pre-COVID. I can't imagine we were doing meetings during the shutdown in person. There were apparently like eighteen and I was at home watching the news, but I didn't see this, so, sorry. No, but I'm, but, but I know there was, there was a narrative that this was only during COVID and no one was here and we didn't have any, that was in person. And there were objectors. There were. In traffic studies during? There were objectors and I believe, I don't know when the traffic. But the, the bottom, I bet, so it wasn't, it wasn't just during COVID. So that's, that's number one. Okay. Um, there were, um, uh, there were a lot of hearings. Um, there was a record, there were land development, there was planning commission. There was, um, I don't remember, I, there was also zoning hearing board proceedings, I think. Um, so there's, uh, I don't remember exactly how many, but I, I, I'm gonna say maybe there were at least more than ten different proceedings in front of this.
Alright.
This township, so, in front of this township. So I, I understand that there's now, people have, because of what's going on on Lionville Station Road, are now focused on Happy Days Farm. And I get it. And I'm not saying that that's wrong. I mean, I, but I just wanna, I just want the record to be clear that it's, it wasn't a, the township did something while people weren't looking. I, I get the fact that it, it may not have been on people's radar, but it's, it, I don't know that it was because of COVID.
Okay, and, and can I, can I comment a little bit? Because you made a couple of points and, um, I just wanna clarify that. The, the ten years, the ten-year thing, for instance, that, the baseline is one year, right? But if you look at any construction of any size, they, almost no one can complete this whole process, go through land development and then complete their construction in one year. It is just.
No, commence construction.
Okay, commence, but even commencing construction, a lot of times if you don't have a tenant in mind, the, one year is the baseline. And we give extensions all the time. And for a large, a large, uh, plot like that, it wasn't our intention to give them this and then pull it away in a year. I mean, that was, that wouldn't be fair to the, any developer in, in any program. The, the, the COVID participation, I, you know, listen, I'm not, I'm not judging. Because I did, before 2017, I was not all that engaged myself. I get it. But we got a lot of participation during COVID. In fact, we had more participation during, on our, our Zoom meetings, though we actually had a, a drop in participation after we went back to in person. So we were not sneaking this through, uh, under the, under the radar and this was all politically done. Um, and, and, you know, I know people don't wanna hear that, but, uh, you know, it wasn't a secret. And finally, the, the forty thousand square foot, these are not definitions of what's allowed in the township. I mean, you can go around the township and count the number of buildings in every, every industrial park, Pickering Valley, Target, the Giant, the, every, every, every school, they're all over forty thou- forty thousand square feet is just under an acre. It's point nine acres. Most of your commercial, larger commercial and industrial buildings are over that.
True.
That is the trigger, that is not a, a required, like, we don't allow over, where that, what that is, is that triggers a conditional use hearing. Where we just saw with YMCA, when you trigger conditional hea- hearing, that doesn't mean that what you're asking for is illegal or outside of the code. It means we now get to evaluate whether that's appropriate for that particular spot. And, and given all, and what, what conditions are necessary to make that an acceptable, uh, acceptable amount. Euclid actually has a very low standard for that and there was historical reasons for that. One of them being, as was mentioned, that you, we got a lot of the developers early, but not we, obviously. The, you know, in the eighties and nineties, many of our, of our township parks were built based on conditional use that extracted agreements to, you know, build Martin Farm Park or build Metromona Pack or build, you know, these things. So these were, uh, really used as part of them when the township was growing very quickly to extract, extract a little bit of benefit to the township. Um, so, and not that I'm, so I just wanted to clarify a couple of things about.
Thank you for that.
And also, they don't, nothing gets grandfathered in to a conditional, there's no, there's no such thing as grandfathering in. Uh, I mean, unless the conditions were put into the new conditional use hearing, there, uh, the old one would go away with the plan that it went with.
Okay, that would be good. So, um, what I suggest is that Euclid adopt a new, uh, communication method for new plans, uh, that are more than three, eight and a half, a lot by eleven placards paid, put out on a site or a, around the site. The only reason I saw the one about here is because it was right next to my mailbox. But, um, but, but there, you know, three, eight and a half by eleven pieces of white paper on a sign put fifty feet, you know, down the driveway. We don't see it. So, I mean, I was just, who knew about Happy Days Farm, size of it, two million square feet? Anybody?
So, I mean, and we, but we advertise, everything is advertised and.
Places and the tube made, and tube newspapers. Who reads the newspaper?
Well, also, what's up? I still didn't hear you. Three places?
I think maybe we could just update the standards.
I think maybe we could just update the standards.
Oh, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry, we have a lot of people that want to talk, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask the next person to come up.
Uh, I spoke for two minutes, can I just, let me read this last paragraph real quick. Now concerning both sites, both the approved Happy Days Farm and the one that, from the Lyonville Station Road, the entire township this affects, I recently asked an engineer to look at Euclid Township's noise ordinance, and whether it is effective in its govern, governance of allowable noise, such as those beeps from trucks, including backup beeping and other docks, loading dock sounds. The engineer found that Euclid's noise ordinance lacks specific measurable rules, which should include testing methods, distance, decibels, et cetera. And so I asked that Euclid Township look to possibly update their noise ordinances concerning, uh, what eighteen-wheelers could bring in, uh, to the township. Thank you.
Alright, great, thanks. I'm gonna go ahead and read the next three names, Mindy Rhodes, Mark Alaway, maybe, and Ralph Powers.
Um, I too would like to address the Lyonville Station pending development by, um, Autobahn Land Development. My hope for the three of you is that you will listen to your constituents, follow the Euclid Township zoning codes and comprehensive plan, and do not grant conditional use to the Autobahn land developer. You may be familiar with previous agreement of sale between Corbly Farm and Toll Brothers and West Town Township. Twice the township denied conditional use to the developer, twice the developer appealed, and twice the developer lost in court. First in the Court of Common Pleas and later in the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court. During that period of time, every meeting and every hea, hearing was held in a large venue to accommodate the public with air conditioning. There were some evenings devoted entirely to public comment, which continued for hours. The board heard the people. Your first responsibility is to the well-being of your constituents, not a developer.
I agree.
Yeah. You are, you are obligated to serve them and have their best interests at heart. Perhaps you will consider reaching out to your neighbors in West Town Township, Supervisor Richard Pomerance and the Township Manager John Altshaw. I hope you will seek their guidance. The Autobahn Land, Autobahn Land application you have already approved with a second in the works is a regional issue. If passed, you will, the three of you will ripple the surrounding community and forever change the character of Chester County. To the three living in attendance this evening, good for you. These elected, these elected officials are not your leaders, they are your representatives. They work for you. This is part of why we all pay taxes. The agreement of sale is contingent upon conditional use. In addition, the developer is seeking zoning changes. This is not over, this has barely begun, and not so in this room knows how this will end, because none of us have a crystal ball. Every single effort made by each one of you is a step toward the best possible outcome. You do have the power to move this needle. Support your planning commission and this board of supervisors by continuing to show up in person and oppose this. Be clear and be relentless with your expectations of them. For God's sake, don't give up.
Mark? Mark Alaway?
Yeah, I'm with the ambulance company. I'm with the ambulance, you're an ambulance. Board asked me to come here, just read and read, we're concerned that the increased traffic is gonna make it very difficult for ambulances. Right, so an ambulance is stuck in traffic is of no value to anyone. I, you guys know this. I know you guys have to play by whatever rules, but when you're developing the project, please keep that in mind, right? It's important to everyone. Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Ralph? Ralph Powers? Is Ralph Powers here? Okay.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Powers, uh, fourteen oh one, Saddle Lane, West Pike Lane. Little, little less than a mile from this, uh, proposed, uh, site. I am opposed to the new warehouse district that is currently under consideration. I feel that the long-term cost will exceed the short-term benefits. The surrounding roads such as one hundred, one thirteen, four oh one, the bypass are already at or over capacity, in my opinion. This site will undoubtedly put additional pressure on those roads. I hope you will consider this as well as all of the environmental and quality of life issues that will surely be impacted by this pers, uh, proposed site. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next up, where?
Madam Chair, can I just, and, and I don't want this, I, I think, and I'm sure the board appreciates all the comments, and the comments are great. Uh, I, I, I'm hearing, um, some things that I'm not sure, I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. Um, the, the, there is no proposal for a district, I don't, this board's not considering any kind of warehouse district. I, I, maybe your point was it's a de facto district or something of that nature. Um, the only application on, um, this, this particular proposal was a sketch plan that got submitted to the planning commission, planning commission commented on it, basically sent it back to the applicant, I think, with, with some comments. There's, there's no application currently pending before this board. I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing. So I just want to make sure people understand that. It's, I'm not saying we don't want to hear your comments, hold on a second. I don't want to say we don't want to hear your comments, because I believe the board does want to hear your comments, and I understand why you're here, and I understand why you're doing it, and I don't think the board has any problem with it whatsoever. I just want to make sure that actually everyone understands where we're at. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. Uh, next up, we're gonna hear from John Coily, Christopher Engel, and Mike Sim, Simonetti.
Thank you. Uh, John Coral, my wife and I live at, uh, one oh two Crimson Place in West Pike. And, and I thank you for your service and, and hearing, I, I appreciate that you, you do listen. Uh, we've lived here for over thirty years, we moved here because it was a rural area, we liked that, we've seen development. Uh, not all of it's been twenty-four seven development, the people in apartments do go to bed at night, uh, which the Lyonville Trade Center will not. So, here's my concern, and I do understand it's a sketch plan. Uh, I'm writing to, or, I, I, I wrote this to, to deliver, but I'll, I'll, I'll just read it. I'm writing to request that the planning commission stop the process of the proposed development of Lyonville Trade Center at this early stage. We're aware of statements by the board, and we just heard it, that until a formal plan has been submitted, there's nothing for the board of the commission, the planning commission to do. I think there is an important step. Uh, please notify the developer that based upon the sketch plan submitted, there is no way a conditional use can be granted under the criteria of section eight oh six point four. You don't need a formal plan and various studies paid for at the expense of the developer to know that adding a second mega warehouse to our area will negatively impact our residential communities, the rural character of our neighborhoods. So why delay your decision to have the developer waste time and money trying to gain approval for this monstrosity? Of course, you can say that the developer has a right to have the studies performed and formal plans submitted. While that's true, it would be wise to put the developer on notice that in their final plan, if their final plan bears any similarity to the sketch plan, for example, one million nine hundred and sixty thousand square feet of warehouse space versus forty thousand permitted, area residents will strenuously object, and conditional use cannot be granted. This is just one example of the wide variances that would be required as noted in EBW's engineering report to the township dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. By giving clear, by making it clear to the developer, this notice would allow them to save time and money trying to gain approval. If they choose to move forward, develop a final plan, which cannot ultimately be approved, that is their informed decision. In a nutshell, please don't lead them on.
Okay, thank you. Christopher Engel.
This angle and, uh, Blue Valley Lane.
Great.
I have a comment and then question, so. Listening to all of the lengthy discussion, and rightfully so, about the noise concerns about the pickleball court, I just humbly request that maybe you might consider doing a noise study before anything happens on Lyonville Station. But my question actually is to you, Mr. Freed. Since you are, you know, you, you act in a very important advisory capacity.
Oh, boy.
Okay, previously, you know, we, we, I've been going to these meetings now, and a lot of times I've heard things like, there's only so much we can do, it's out of our hands, there's nothing we can do right now, you know, and, and it's not just this board, you know, it's GAZD and, and, and other places as well. So, this is my question. As the solicitor who's advising on the law of what can and can't be done, if board determines that the plan submitted, the Lyonville Station does not fit the character of our community, or would create an undue burden on the community residents, what are the things the board can do? To better align that development with the needs of residents, can you give us some bullet points?
Yeah, so you're, you're not gonna like my answer to this, telling you upfront.
And I'll respond.
That's okay. Um, my, a, and I'm sure, and I, I know there's other lawyers in the room, the legal advice I give the board is legal advice, and that's between me and the board.
Okay.
So, I'm not really comfortable opining on what advice I would give the board.
So, as a legal scholar, what would you tell us as residents?
I, I wouldn't call myself a legal scholar either. And, and my, my professors are, are laughing at you right now.
I just, you know, there, there's a lot of supposition that's swirling around, and, you know, we are all combing over stuff that like, wow, it's dry stuff, okay? And I just, I want to know, one, and maybe, maybe you can't answer that, but maybe you can. Like, instead of continuing to hear the things you can't do, can you do on our behalf?
Well, and, and let me, and, and then I'll, I'll let the board, and I, and I, and I understand that, I don't know, I think, actually, this board's been pretty good about not doing the, it's out of our hands kind of thing. I think they.
Well, I, actually, at the last meeting.
The, I, those, and, and sometimes it comes up, but I think when they can, they try and tell you what they're capable of doing.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I mean, that's just, that's my take on it. I think this is, uh, uh, you know, I, I deal with a number of boards. I think this is a pretty responsive board. I mean, that's, again, that's my opinion, and maybe I'm biased. I get.
Never say out of my hands.
To the doubt, like, really want to know what.
But the, the bottom line is, you know, conditional use, there, there are guidelines, there are elements that have to be met, um, and there's a certain amount of discretion, um, and then there's a certain amount of, of, yeah, and, and as you said, you look through it, and you can see that there's a list of all these criteria um, that at least is used as a guidance, and, and their elements, you don't necessarily always have to meet all of them, but you have to meet some of them, um, depending on the situation, and, and that's, I mean, so it's gonna be very fact-specific. But again, the difficulty and, 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 and I, and I'll use this also as an opportunity to respond to something a, a prior commenter said. I don't think anyone's leading on the developer. I think if the developer has any idea that this is gonna be an easy process, um, I think one look at these videos will tell him otherwise, right?
We hope so.
Well, and I, and I get it, and, and that's why I don't think anyone on this day has begrudges the fact that you're here. I think we, they understand it, I think they get it. Frankly, and, and this is about the board, it's not about me, I will tell you, I represent a lot of folks like you, so I, I get it. Um, but I know this board gets it, um, and they want to hear your, what you say. And, and at the end of the day, you, you may agree with what they do, you may not agree with what they do, but I, I think the bottom line is they, they want you to know that you're being heard.
So.
Uh, well, I would just, I would just say that, that as a board member, I mean, I work for the residents. We all work for the residents. You are our boss, basically. When I hear comments and concerns from residents, I then ask, you know, the township administration and our legal, um, representation, you know, how can we take care of these concerns? I mean, I, I'm definitely taking my cues from the residents and figuring out how to solve these problems, based on what residents want.
Yeah. And, so, can I? Well. So, so, I, I, I'm really asking people to call out, because I, I really have a little hard trouble, like, following my, my train of thought when, when, um, when I'm trying to speak, so, and someone talks, but, um, so. I, I don't want to talk about Lyonville Station Road, because we don't have the plane in front of us, but I can talk about, but I can talk about Happy Days Farm. And I, maybe, you know, I, I will say a few things, and you can see how they apply to Lyonville Station Road compared to Happy Days Farm. Um, and Mark, you can stop me if you think that, but I'm gonna talk just about Happy Days Farm, it's already decided, that should be for your game, right? Okay. They'll bite in front of me if I get in trouble, right? So, um, you know, but when we do a conditional use hearing, uh, well, like you said, we have to, I forget the exact wording and the ordinance, but we're looking for the, you know, maintaining the character and undue burden on the, on the residents and so forth, and you look at Happy Days Farm. And first of all, um, there was not grandfathered in, but there was a plan on there. In the back of all of our minds when we're doing the conditional uses, we have to be reasonable. We can have all the stuff written in the ordinance, we can have all these codes. If we're unreasonable, and it is appealed to a court, the court can decide you've had unreasonable restrictions on a, a legal development, and they'll find for the, for the applicant, and the applicant can do what they want.
Without condition.
Potentially without conditions, right. So, that's a terrible outcome for the township, because then they lose control of the development entirely. So, we're trying to find the right balance between protecting the township and allowing the developer to get, you know, do what they can do legally or allowed to do, and no one wants to go through the expenses of a lawsuit that we're potentially gonna lose. So, for Happy Days Farm, okay, so what's the impact on, Happy Days Farm is surrounded by a turnpike on two sides, the interchange and, and, uh, you know, you know where it is, and then Sherry Boulevard and one thirteen. On Sherry Boulevard's businesses, I think there's a daycare, um, but mostly it's, it's commercial businesses. On one, you know, on one thirteen, plus is either Woods or the Eagle Blue Development. On no end, on no side are there residential properties or properties that are used for, you know, let's say, like, uh, entertainment purposes. Well, let me, let me speak, because you asked me what we can do.
Okay.
So, I evaluate that and say, well, what is the burden on the residents around there? It's really hard to find a major burden on, on the surrounding neighbors, and even if you go further, you have Lyonville Station as a direct, when it was a compared to, compared to, say, if there was a home on the, on the border of that, like, that's a big burden on the people who live right on the, on, on the, the edge of it. You know, the, the cars driving by on the turnpike are not gonna be bothered by an idling truck. So, you're asking what I can do, so I evaluate that, and I say, okay, so, is there conditions that need to be made to mitigate the impact on the neighbors? Well, you know, there were some certain issues that were brought up by some of the commercial businesses that were dealt with um, and handled privately between the developer and the commercial to their satisfaction.
And, and here too.
And here, we had some conditions in this, right? Um, and we also, so then there's also is the, the road situation, we're requiring some pretty major upgrades to, if, if they go ahead with, with the development, which they haven't started yet, they have to improve Sherry Boulevard to prove, improve the roundabout. They have to make improvements to the roads that get from the, 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 the area out to the major highways. Um, so that mitigates some of the impact. You know, that, the, the, the thing with Happy Day Farms is Sherry Boulevard is actually pretty, e, even though they have to make major changes. You know, that, the 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 thing with Happy Day Farms is Sherry Boulevard is actually pretty, e- even though they have to make major changes to it, it's a pretty strong, small stretch of road, right? So do we need to, so when we put conditions on that, do I have to say, well, no, there's nothing that can be done to fix that, well. I think if I'm trying to be reasonable and balanced, what a a judge would say, saying, no, no, there's no way you can fix that road. It's it's pretty, you know, that even though that's pretty short. It's pretty hard to say no to that, and that's what I was looking, so I could go through all these things, but the point is, I'm looking at that particular property in that site and saying. Can we do these through reasonable? Uh, conditions that mitigate the 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 impact to the surrounding area? And recognize the zoning that's already in there. And, you know, if you, when I look at another property, another location, those those impacts might be very different, and just because one looks like this other, it doesn't mean the impacts are the same. I think the impacts could be very different, and I'm not going to say anything more than that, but yeah, the impacts can be very, very different, and they're going to be judged differently.
Well, that's good to hear. With 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 all due respect, the one thing you didn't mention, you're talking about the impacts of the property. I think. Okay, okay, and and. Like. Lot of trucks, a lot of traffic, okay, and that's, you know, you know, like, like, there's traffic, noise, environment. That's what we're here for, traffic, noise, and and and, you know, stormwater.
Right, so I mean, I I like this, I couldn't go through all the, uh, traffic is also an issue, and then it's also the length of road that those trucks are going to be on in our township is a a big part of that traffic, and so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, your time's up.
Wait, go ahead.
This is our best. My microphone took my time, no, just to sum up i- in regards to how. This board or this body or this administration takes information and how we process that. Um, we're constantly talking to our solicitor, Mr. Freed, we're constantly talking to the administrative staff. We are constantly looking at the feedback that we're receiving from the Environmental Advisory Council, the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, these are all. Your representatives and volunteers that are going to get to take a look at the plans, our engineers look at the the. Everything that's submitted to us, so it's it's an insane amount of information, I can tell you. Um, I was not on this board for the vote for Happy Days Farm, but I was on the EAC, and I think the EIS, the Environmental Impact Study that was completed. Was like three thousand pages or something, I mean, it it is an immense amount of material that we all go through, that we sift through. And it's not taken lightly, and the questions that you raised to us. We're thinking about, we're we're sending to Mr. Freed, we're asking our zoning professionals about, and so. I asked the staff, we we harass them, it's borderline harassment. Um, but it's not taken lightly, and I appreciate every question that you guys send to us. Because it may be something that's on my radar, it might not be, it might be a perspective that I missed, and so. That's important to all of us, and and you sending that to us, or saying it in a meeting, or in an email, or in a letter. We take all of that in, and I'm sure you can imagine that we've been inundated with a lot of that information, but it's all getting filtered to where it needs to go.
And let and let me just jump in because the vice chair mentioned something, um. They do get a lot of emails, they beg me to respond, to be able to respond substantively. They, I I tell them no. I tell them you have a pending, you're going to have, unless something, pending application in front of you. Um, so say, you know, thank you very much, just because you're getting a short response back. That that's on me, that's not on, they they want to respond, I'm advising them, and so I'm going to break my rule about not telling you when I advise them. I advise them not not to respond subservient.
Okay, uh, thank you, guys, next up, Mike Simonetti, is Mike Simonetti here? Yep, and then after Mike Simonetti, Keith Kendall and Diana Lavassar.
I came here to talk about pickleball, but I'm somewhat of an expert in noise, pollution and traffic, I'm from New York City, if you haven't been able to tell from my accent. Okay, I hate to think that I moved down here many decades ago, and now I have to turn around and go back to New York City.
Okay, all right, thanks. Keith, Keith Kendall?
Keith Kendall, 332 Valley View. Everything I came here to say has already been said, will be said again many times, so just let me save us all some time, add one more voice, support. What everyone is saying here, you're our representatives, but you're also our community members, so as community members, mount. Like walk on neighboring properties, try to imagine what it's going to be like to have. Two million square feet of warehouse and thousands of trucks idling there. Side with us. And that's all we're really looking for.
Right, thank you. Oh, Diana Lavassar. Somebody, oh, yeah, okay.
Hi, thank you, um, Diana Lavassar, Jennifer Drive, Chester Springs, thirty year resident of this beautiful township. Um. Pretty much all of my comments have already been addressed, questions have already been asked, um, I just want to go on record saying how opposed I am to this. Environmental disaster in the making. Um, I also wanted to, just as an afterthought, uh, for the YMCA Pickleball Court. Um, I think it would be really, really advantageous, as somebody mentioned before, let's not put the cart in front of the horse. Let's do the studies ahead of time that we need to do because. I live six tenths of a mile from Lionville Station Road, and I can already see tractor trailers coming down 113. Which my husband fought very hard to get the forty-five mile an hour speed limit signs put on 113. And if we have to fight again, we'll have stop signs at Jennifer Drive, or uh, traffic lights at Jennifer Drive, Davis. And wherever else we need to fight for them to to just. But lead, eh, most importantly, the environmental impact, uh, the beautiful piece of property, again, as as someone mentioned. Go out and take a walk, whether there's bog turtles or not, or eagles or whatever, take a walk around this beautiful property and just see. What your constituents are going to have to deal with on a daily basis. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, next up on the list, Jim May, Dee Doherty and Ryan. Hevener. Is Jim May here?
I'm Jim May, I live at uh, 342 Harshaw Drive. Township for about twenty-five years, and uh. I have to have to be honest with you, I'm not really sure that. We understand the gravity. Of a of a development like this, what it's going to do to the area. I thi- I think it could be devastating, and we've heard about the traffic where, you know, 113, 100. You know, 401, the Pennsylvania Turnpike, you know, those tractor trailers are not always going to be on the turnpike. They're going to be coming in from all different routes, and it's going to change the dynamics here like you don't, you you can't even imagine. And I'm not really sure that we understand that. You know, we're we're talking about, and I and I can appreciate the pickleball, the noise and things like that, but I will tell you right now. If you're up on Route 100 where the turnpike crosses, we're actually violating the noise ordinances in that whole neighborhood. There's people behind me that live there, if you were to go to their homes tomorrow morning. And get up with them when their kids go to school, you you can't hear anything except the turnpike. If you're on 113, same thing, you go down to 113, it's so loud right now, that if we did a noise study right now. We we wouldn't be able to go for it because it's all in violation. You know, we we talk about, you know, and and there's a lot of other things, and a lot of people have said a lot of things that we could discuss, and I realize that this is a big pro- a big process. But we are, we are really counting on your support here because I think that this is a, this is a wonderful area to live in. And it's it's all about sustainable productivity, you know, how can we move forward as a township? But how can we manage it so it's good for the people that live here, as well as for the businesses that do business here? And I I'll tell you, I do not think that this is going to be sustainable, we're not going to have one of these, we're going to have two. And I don't think any of us here have any idea what what that's going to do to Euclid Township, I think it's going to change it forever.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dee Dee Doherty?
Hi, Dee Doherty from 108 Blue Ribbon Way, uh, my husband and I settled in Euclid Township in nineteen ninety-one, after we got married, we decided to stay here and raise our kids. And one graduated from East and one from the STEM Academy, and we created lifelong friends here, and. Back then in nineteen ninety-one, if I would have gotten off the turnpike with all of the warehouses there, I probably would have kept driving. And it, I wouldn't have been here, so I think it's going to change the township forever, um, and I hope it doesn't. Hope it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Ryan Hevener, yep.
Hevener.
One Silver Fox Lane, um, wrote an email.
Yeah.
This past week, thank you for your response, um, it was very non-substantive. Um, I get it, I.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I am also in the legal profession, I I I get it, and I respect, uh. Mr. Freed right here, um, but. I do live, uh, like many of the other other neighbors here, a couple hundred yards from the northern end of this proposed sketch plan development. Um, I am opposed to it. Um, couple questions, though, so with the traffic studies, um, and the environmental studies, um. Those would be submitted with the application concurrently typically? Um, what, how's that process look, and and who? Um, who's responsible for obtaining those those studies, paying for those studies?
So that would be part of, I believe, the land development process, and they would be, they would be on the applicant.
Okay, so.
That, I mean, Carrie, you can correct.
That's correct, they would also be required to be submitted with the conditional use application.
So what what kind of biases usually involved in those, uh, traffic studies that are paid by? The applicant, you know, um.
Well, that's why, and and I think that's, and and look, it's a fair point, I I think it's a fair point, I think, and someone mentioned about, you know, earlier about Mariner, um, it it's a fair point. Um, that's one of the reasons that the township, I mean, with, so the the applicant has to also sign a professional services agreement, a PSA. Where they're paying our engineer also to review it, so, and we can, you know, we can engage traffic engineers, we can engage noise engineers, we have our township engineer. So they do the work, we also have an opportunity to review it.
Okay, um. Would it be best to also have an independent? Study, studies. Um, I know s- some of the neighbors are are thinking about that ourselves, putting it, you know, on the cost of ourselves and on the township, or on the community. Um, and then submitting those, I guess those would be factored in as well.
It's, I will tell you, it's a fair point, I I mean, my, and I'll just tell you from my experience, is that. The professionals engaged by the township are usually pretty discerning, and if if they aren't satisfied with the analysis, they're going to come back and say. We need better analysis here, or we don't trust this analysis, or we don't like this analysis, or something went wrong. I if, I mean, I, y- you always run the risk, I guess, that someone's going to falsify documents or falsify information, but that's. I mean, then you're, you're, yeah, then you're really getting into, so generally, you you know, you're trusting that at least it's. It's it's true information, and then they can review it and say, w- we we don't agree with your conclusions, or we think it's incomplete.
So, so, and I work, I work in pharmaceutical development, making, you know, making new drugs with the FDA. And this is how most regulated industry industries work, you know, when I, before I worked in in that, you know, when I work outside of a regulated industry, you know, sometimes you think, oh, well, both sides will do the plan. Most of the time, because, you know, the the, what you do is have the applicant do like a clinical trial for a drug, right? And that's all on the applicant, they do all the work and all, and then, and when the when the regulation, regulatory bodies are are working well, they. Do an enormous amount of work, and I think we do a good job of doing enormous amount of work to verify that these were done appropriately, that the data is reliable. And then these people have to stand in front of here and swear an oath, and in a hearing that the, what they're saying is true. So it's it's not a small thing for a engineer to come to a meeting and have data that that is not, um. You know, it could be their career, and so, and like, and their license, right? So it's it's not a small thing that if if an if a developer asks an engineer that they hired to falsify information, first of all, they could, we could find that, and we we look at it very closely. Our our own licensed engineers look at it very closely, but you're you're asking someone, and I'm sure. Not that I'm sure where, but like, you're asking someone to make a big, a big step, right, so. Yeah, it's not so much as falsifying documents, it's it's, you know.
Expert biases, sure.
You know, expert witness versus expert witness.
Well, that's fair.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm getting at. And our job is to make sure, right, and so our, that's why we have what we consider our experts, look at these and say, like, where where where's, where's this, doesn't look right, did it, but they did it well. Um, you know, and like, for instance, somebody asked about cat, uh, traffic study for for Happy Days during COVID, but that data was collected prior to COVID, and that would be something we look at, was it reliable? Actually, the data was collected in, you know, I think it was two thousand eighteen, I might be wrong about it, but it was prior, but the point is, those are the type of things that our engineers would look at. And that leads into my my final question is, is how will these studies factor in the Happy Days Farm? Trade Center, you know.
I mean, Lionville Trade Center?
Uh, the I-76 Happy Days Farm. They, if if I remember, they have to consider plan, I mean. Yeah, I mean, how do they factor all that in without it existing?
They have to factor it in, yeah.
Well, the Department of Transportation has certain assumptions that you have to make based on proposals that are already on the books, and based on your current.
This one, and that's sort of the point I was making early on too, about modeling versus having something to actually look at, and. Based on the analysis, I mean, they can, you can do the best you can do when it's not there, but there's, and and I think supervisor Miller mentioned this, there's a, there's an awful lot of. Required roadwork that needs to be done as part of Happy Days.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other? Comment? Sure, just one at a time, as we did last month, just come and line up neatly.
To bring the mic down.
Oh, I don't know how to, uh.
Oh.
Zip turn this, I got it, I got it, I got it, thank you. So I'm Laura.
State your name, yeah, and your street.
Laura Cisco Davis, and I'm at five, uh, fourteen West Euclid, so I'm right near the Lionville Elementary School.
Okay, sorry, just let me. Uh, yeah, some people are filtering out, and I can't hear you.
Okay, I'll wait.
All right, go ahead.
So, uh, I just want to dovetail what, um, the last speaker just talked about, and it's the traffic study, so my main concerns are Route 113, there are four schools impacted. So Lionville Middle. Lionville Elementary, Downingtown East High School, and Euclid Hills, so right now, it's a danger zone. So adding any more to that is like catastrophic. Um, so when you're doing traffic studies or looking at traffic studies, please look at school hours and school days. Right now, buses can't get into Lionville Elementary at school time. So adding even one more eighteen wheeler to the mix to get down to Route thirty is gonna, kids will not get to school on time. So that's like a minor, it's a major concern, and it's a long list to add to what everybody else just said, but I wanted to make that specific request.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike Santangelo, uh, I live at 415 New Comen Rose, uh, I just want to go on record as opposing this project.
Okay.
And I would ask that, uh, when is there going to be a meeting with this on the agenda? And when there is, can you please not have it in this venue? It's very obvious, and I don't want to say there's nefarious intent on this, but it's very obvious that the community is very concerned by this. And then a last thing I would say, I'd allow you, but we have an election coming up, I think the school board is part of that, and I think we need to have our voices heard, so, thank you.
So, and. Let let me just, let me briefly, um, address the venue question.
Yeah.
And and also when when it's going to come up, so there was, and I, you're probably aware that the last board supervised meeting was done at the middle school. Um, be, to try and. To try and accommodate, you know, even though it wasn't on the agenda. It's, it's difficult to move the meetings for, for every meeting, particularly when it's not on the agenda. I, I expect, and I don't want to speak for, for staff, but I expect that when it's on the agenda, there'll be, there'll be a different venue. But until it's on the agenda, I mean, and, and, you know, the board's been, I think, very clear about they welcome comment, they want, I don't know that, shouldn't say that. I think the board understands why people are here tonight, but it, it's, it's still a little surprising, I think even to me, that you're getting these number of people out on something that's not on the agenda. And I get, and I know that's what you want, and that's good. And I, and I don't think the board has any problem with it, but it would be a little difficult to try and guess when something's not on the agenda, when they need a new venue. But I, I think it's probably fair to say, and, and the manager can tell me that I'm out of my mind. But I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's probably fair, and he wouldn't, I think he agrees with this, that to say that when it's on the agenda, it will be in a bigger venue.
I just wanted to add, and we've said this before, that when an application is submitted, we will make it a newsletter on the township's website. So if you have not already signed up for the notify me, please do that. It's right on the main page. Blast emails out as things come on, and it also blasts agendas out as they are posted. So definitely recommend that people sign up for notify me, and we will make sure that that is posted the second we receive an application.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Toby Chadzie. My wife and I live at 615 Byers Road, which is West Pike Land. However, we share a property pin with this development. So it is right behind our house. And everybody's made great, great points here tonight. One that has not been made. You mentioned that the Happy, was it Happy Days Farm, whatever, is surrounded, there's no residential properties touching that. However, there's millions of dollars of residential properties touching the Lineville Station Farm. If this is approved, who's going to compensate us for our loss in property values? Because. There's already a, there's already a house on Lineville Station Road for sale. I have no idea if it has anything to do with this or not. But I look at that and I think, good luck trying to sell your house with this. Our house, you know, if we, if we, if this is approved, we'll probably move. I don't want to listen to tractor trailers all night long with our bedroom windows open. So our house could, I mean, it's probably a million plus dollar piece of property. It's not gonna go up in value, it's gonna go down. And there's millions, there's houses all around this on the West Pike Land side that are multimillion dollar properties. And their, their value, they're gonna, you know, they're screwed. So I just like to point that out. And also, you know, you need to do what's best for Euclid Township. But just remember, this borders West Pike Land. And it's the whole area. When we, when we moved here, we've lived here 10 years. And we moved here because this was such a beautiful community. And trust me, if this was there, we wouldn't, we would never have moved here. Nor, I don't know why anybody else would want to move here if this goes through. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's move down.
We'll talk about it. Mike Donovan, 702 Orchard Valley Road, Winchester Springs. I was very excited to have an original point, and he just took it. I'm gonna just second that. I can't stress enough the home value argument. I think we're, a lot of people talking about, you know, sub clauses within, you know, the, whatever, the ordinance detail of environment and some soft factors, but like, this is real. I moved here a little over two years ago from Boston. And we spent two years searching from East Main Line all the way to here and settled here for the reasons that everyone is describing. And without doubt, I would not have moved here ever if that was there. And this is precedent. There's a lot of open land. This is not the only one. This is going to set precedent. So I'm fighting against the third one, the fourth one, the fifth one. It's going to happen. And once we go through all this and lose, it is free sailing for the rest. So the home value point is huge, and I would consider like a very direct damage. And I live two miles away. I consider my house impacted, for sure. So I think the home value point is actually massive in the context of you guys defending, you know, our interests. Follow up there to the, the previous comment, and this isn't in any combative way, but the clinical trial analogy, I don't think is necessarily very analogous here.
Which analogy, I'm sorry?
This point that the FDA regulates clinical trials and depending on, you know, perhaps you don't do a great job of the submission and you approve something, right? There is very objective results of that.
It was just meant to be like.
You could, you could have somebody die. You could have doctors prescribing this and attempted treatment not happening, right? We might have subjective more traffic, subjectively more traffic, right? You could take a drug off the market, you could put it on hold. What are we gonna do? Amazon is there, are you gonna shut them down? Right? So it's very similar to the whole YMCA argument where people were kind of debating like, you guys started kind of, it was frustrating to listen to because all they're asking for is like, do you have a clean contract? What can you do? What are the, what are the carve-outs or their loopholes? Is it gonna go for five years and you can't do anything about it? I view there is no recourse here. If this goes through and, you know, the traffic study was done, the engineer who looks at it, is he gonna do his own one or is he just gonna say, looks really thorough, I believe it? Right? Like, is he doing his own one to say theirs is wrong? Doesn't sound like it. So again, I just, we're gonna be on the losing end of it with limited to the recourse. So that's why I don't view it as.
I'm gonna go ahead and let, yeah.
I think you took my analogy a little further than I intended. I was just saying that in a lot of regulated industries, the applicant does the study and then the regulator does the, that's as far as I was taking it.
Might hear that, say, that sounds really smart and confident and take it. And I think there is a subtle difference. It's very, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
That's it. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name's Christine Taylor. I live on Rose Tree Drive. I'm a little farther away than the people who abut this property. But there is no doubt that this plan would affect all of us everywhere. I emailed all of you after the last meetings, thank you for responding. I also worked for the school district for 13 years. My daughter's a nurse, she ran with the emergency services. She doesn't live here anymore, but she did. And I want to just tell you that this year, with one of those flash freezes, we had a student step off the bus onto the, onto the ground at school. And, and shatter a hip. We stood over that student, with our coats on, that student holding umbrellas for well over an hour, awaiting emergency response. Because there was a flash freeze, the bypass was a mess, 113 was a mess, an ambulance went off the road. They're wonderful people, they do an excellent job. My complaint is not, I'm not complaining about the emergency response. I'm telling you, that's one example, and that will only be magnified. I'll also tell you that just a month ago, maybe, there was another terrible accident on 113. 113 and Peck Road is a disaster. People drive like maniacs and it's a disaster. There was another accident and traffic, of course, is diverted through the neighborhoods. I had tractor trailers in front of my house. I live on a small street with no sidewalks. I don't have little kids, but all my neighbors do. It was unbelievable. My biggest, I mean, I have a lot of huge fears about this, but there's a four-way stop at the top of my street on Woodland and Rose Tree. What's that gonna be, a traffic light soon? You're gonna have to take extra, you know, space from all the properties that abut 113 to expand it to six lanes? You're gonna, Woodland Drive is gonna have traffic lights and, and go to Peck Road? This, this whole plan is a disaster. It will ruin our community. It will destroy the reason everybody came here. I had one other example that I wanted to give to you, and I, I'm sorry, I'm. Oh, the, the first woman who came up earlier spoke to it. I really hope that you pay attention to the traffic studies and the times and the dates of, of when they're doing it. And compare it to Downingtown's schedule. Because nobody can get to the schools. The buses can't get there, the parents can't get there, teachers only get there because they get there early.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Graham, 283 Watch Hill Road. I have, I have some observations that I made on a recent, two recent trips, one to Manhattan and one to DC the following, within the same week. And there has to be, there has to be some, some incentive for these people to build these mega warehouses that comes from the state, from the feds, I don't know. But between Exit 7A on 95 and the Port Elizabeth, there are, I counted, and I was alone in the car, give me a ticket, but I saw at least eight empty mega warehouses. The only one that wasn't empty was Amazon. And all of these places are off of 95, which has three in each direction truck lanes. So they have, you know, they're not touching, you know, the cars, car lanes at all. They have their own lane, which I use on the weekends. But they also have freight rail service. And they are miles from Port Elizabeth. Euclid has none of that. We have the Pennsylvania Turnpike, which is, you know, sometimes three lanes in each direction. Most of these people are gonna be headed to the Port of Wilmington and the Port of Philadelphia, which puts them right down Route 100. And then on my way to, my way back from DC from seeing my first grandchild.
Congratulations.
Thank you. He's very cute, cutest baby in the world.
Sending a picture.
But I came through the Fort McHenry Tunnel on the way back. And all of a sudden, there's this empty warehouse with this huge available banner on it, like bigger than the ones in New Jersey. And I must have seen at least six other empty warehouses. Again, the only one that was operating was the Amazon one, and I couldn't see it, it was too far away and I had to drive. But you know, again, they are serviced by a freight train, a freight railroad right there. And Baltimore Harbor's right there. There's nothing like that available here that would make this attractive unless there are incentives to have an empty building. And I don't know what those incentives are, I don't know who could be providing those incentives, but somebody's paying these people some, along, you know, these many, many, and I don't know that it's Audubon, I'm not accusing them, somebody's paying for all of these warehouses to be built without tenants. And I guess Audubon recently said their tenant fell through. So, you know, I guess that's, that's the plan, is to, to build these empty things. And then it's a tax write-off or whatever, but there's some incentive for them to build these things that will never, ever, ever be occupied. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosa Marar, and my address is 3610 Wagner. I live in Chester Springs, but right on the border of Euclid, Euclid and West Vincent. So I'm here, I'm a little bit newer to this party. I moved here just a little bit ago, a couple of years ago. And, you know, I, I oppose this. I wanted to speak on some past experiences that I've had with things like this. You know, I've worked with, I work with the FDA, I am in regulatory. But also in my past, I used to work with restaurants and I used to live in California, where a lot of these mega warehouses came into some of our neighborhoods, took down the farms. And it seemed like a good idea, and I will tell you that it's pushed a lot of people out. This happened in Michigan as well. I was actually gonna buy my first house in Michigan, and some of the warehouses came in trying to do the same thing. It's, it just seems like a repeat pattern. And what I've seen from both experiences, and now a third one happening close to my parents in Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, what's happening is, you know, nothing good is coming from this. Honestly, if you, if you find a specific area for the industrial mega warehouses, I think that's probably the only solution. But to put it so close to everybody's residential, you know, homes and everything, you have to think about all the people that are gonna come in and work at the warehouses. Where are they gonna live? How is the crime gonna increase? This is supposed to be one of the more safe, you know, that's one of the reasons why I moved here is because it is a safer place, it's beautiful, it's, you know. So a lot of that's gonna change. There's gonna be a lot more, a lot more residential, maybe apartments, a lot of apartments came in. So, you know, no judgment here, I'm just trying to state facts of what happened. But crime increased, you know, actually, people were moving out of their nice homes. They were coming back and actually repealing taxes. So taxes, you, you know, the townships weren't able to bring in as many taxes because everything was lowering. And so I just wanted to come up here and say how much I oppose this. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michael Hind, Kara Court. Gentleman earlier poignantly asked, what can you do? And there was kind of not really an answer. So I just wanted to read something from your own ordinances real quick. So subsection 301.2, definitions of zoning, says, the word shall or must is always mandatory. Section 806.4K, each applicant for conditional use approval shall establish the effect of the proposed development on the reserved capacity, level of service of the public roads, road intersections, providing access to and in the area of the subject property. Conditional use shall not be granted if the proposed development is to have an effect of material, material increasing traffic congestion on said roads. So it's not what can you do, it's what you must.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Dwyer from Jennifer Drive. I want to thank you, I have had some email back and forth, and I appreciate you explained it a lot better, the conditional use, to my understanding now. However, what hasn't been addressed is why the variance was approved for Happy Days Farm. The variance for the loading docks. Our township variances, loading docks need to be on the back, if I understand it correctly, the back of a building. What was the reasoning for putting the, approving the loading docks on the front of Happy Days?
Let, let me, so, and we, we addressed this, I think, a few meetings ago, but so variances are one of the things that this board actually doesn't get under Pennsylvania law. It goes to a separate body that's called the zoning hearing board. That is, they're independent of the sport. And they essentially sit as like a court, and this board has no control over it. This board points the people that are on that, the ones they do that, they have no control over.
They don't get final say?
They, they do not get final say on variances.
They should have got final say.
Yeah, so, so that, now there should be a written decision on the variances that explain why the zoning hearing board did what they did. And that's, that's probably the best that I could point you to. But other than that, you know, this board's not gonna have an answer for that.
Okay, so going forward, it's important that we go to zoning board meetings.
For, for variances, yes. Zoning hearing board, it's, so, and I'll just, and I know we, we talked about this a little bit. There's, there's the zoning hearing board process for variances. There's the conditional use process, which is if, in this case, a building is over a certain size or ordinance says it has to come to this board for a conditional use hearing. And then there's what's known as the land development process, where it's gonna, you know, there's gonna be plans, there's gonna be all sorts of other things. All those things, variance goes to the zoning hearing board. Everything else comes to the planning commission and trickles up to this.
I thought the zoning board approved it and then you final.
Not for variances.
Okay.
Right.
And just to add on to the danger, it was four years ago, a few days ago, that my daughter's best friend was killed along 113 in a tragic accident with a bus making a turn into Lineville Middle School. So, you know. So, you know, it's just going to be worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good. Good evening. Uh, my name is Denise Schaeffler. I live on three three five Harshaw Drive on, in the Valley View Development. Um, I have lived in Chester County since nineteen sixty-six. I have lived in Euclid Township since nineteen eighty-five, in my current house for thirty-two years, which borders Lionville Station Road. Um, one of the things that I'm concerned about, um, a young lady prior to me said something about it. Um, do we have the infrastructure to support all of the population that will be coming in and out to work there on a daily basis? Meaning the police, ambulances, et cetera, for the people that aren't going to live here. And I don't believe that that number of population coming in and out of here on a regular basis is going to treat this township and the surrounding townships with the respect that the owners do. And I believe that the infrastructure, including the traffic, the police, the ambulance, um, the businesses around here, are we going to be able to support that? So it's not just the traffic that the warehouses are going to create with the, uh, tractor trailers, trucks, et cetera, but the population that, it's been shown that in this township and our surrounding townships, we don't have the unemployment that's going to support that. So, thank you.
Right, thank you.
How you doing? Matt Haynes. On Harshaw Drive, now about a quarter mile from the site. Um, done a little research on tractor trailers and the amount of where that they're going to create on road surfaces versus cars. Um, studies have shown that, that anywhere from two to five thousand percent more than a car. So, if we're dealing with seven hundred, oh, tractor trailers, that's equivalent of two to three million, you know, sedans going down the roads. Uh, I know you mentioned that on Happy Days, you're asking them to improve, you know, different portions of the roads that they'll be, they'll be using mostly, but how do we manage where all of these tractor trailers are actually going? There's obviously no way to do that, right? Uh, and if, well, there's obviously thousands of cars that are going to be involved, vans and everything else, not just the tractor trailers, if we just single out the tractor trailers, seven hundred, I'd say a thousand, you know, we're lucky, several million more. And if it's running twenty-four seven, that's not just somebody going to, you're going back home, so you're multiplying that again. And who's going to be paying for any improvements, and that they're going to be, you know, using, you know, you can't manage it, they're going to be everywhere, and they're destroying roads, and I'm feeling that we'll be footing the bill for that, and that's pretty unacceptable, in my opinion, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Donna Russell. I live at five oh seven William Salisberry Drive in Euclid Township. Myself and my husband have been in our township for thirty-six years. We're the original owners of our house. And I've lived in Chester County and grew up in West Whiteland Township and in Euclid Township my entire life. So we've watched the change in the development, which inevitably happens, you know, when you have, live in a beautiful community. But I hope you all consider that you're the supervisors representing us as a community. And I'm, I'm assuming that you do all live in the township. You know what our area is like. Not one person that I have spoken to has been, has thought of any positive that can come from this. Um, I can also tell you that where we live at the intersection of a hundred and, or one thirteen and Peck Road, there's been many accidents and several deaths at that intersection. And if you start going down one thirteen, starting at Lionville, uh, middle, all the way to the thirty bypass on a daily basis, it is bumper to bumper traffic and many trucks, as many of you know. So, speaking from the heart, I would just have to say to please consider all of us who live in the township, who love this area, who don't want to move away. My husband's whole family moved to Chester County, all the Delaware County people that I know that have moved to Chester County. We wish they would go back sometimes, but, you know, they're here for a reason, and I hope you consider that when you've got this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Cupp. I am on Eagles Farm Road. And I'm here for several reasons. First, of course, I'm very concerned. I'm hoping that you can help us through this and turn it away in some way. Um, but I've also had the experience of dealing with a lot of these mega warehouses. They have destroyed major sections of Lebanon County, uh, where my family is from. And most recently, they put up a mega warehouse, um, I'd say about two miles from where my in-laws live in historic North Cornwall Township. Uh, it's where the Cornwall furnaces from the Revolutionary War, um, old, old buildings, much, very much like here. And, um, my in-laws have been tremendously affected by it. Um, you think that they're not going to use these little roads, but they do. Um, they will be on Byers Road. They absolutely will try to use four oh one. Um, they have done that in Lebanon, and it's, it's horrific. I, I can't even, you know, you go to a little tiny town, um, little stop sign, you try, try to turn right, but there's a tractor trailer in front of you that really can't make that turn, but they will try. They'll run over things, they'll run into buildings, um, and they have. So please, please consider that part of this as well. Because even though they might say we prefer to use one of the more major roads or cherry, uh, whatever it might be, there will be people not taking those roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Judy Hoofman. This time it does impact me, because I'm at, um,
Sure.
Sorry, I'm like a bad penny. Five ten Wellington Square. Um, so, a couple of things I was thinking about, when we first started the meeting at the very beginning, the officer had reported some statistics, and the things that she was citing about how many commercial trucks were stopped along for the month of April, and how many were overweight, and how many, and how many. Uh, the question I had was, how does, how long does it take for one of those stops to occur? And has there been a study on the impact of that, when you multiply that by thousands of trucks coming down? Are they going to have to increase your police force now? Or are you going to have to, you know, the mag, magnitude of all that, has that been weighed into your decision-making? That was just one of my thoughts, or some one. The other thing I thought about too was that when you're going back to the pickleball, is that you are actually putting a curfew for noise pollution by seven o'clock. Now, are you planning on doing something similar for the truck volume? And the last point I'll make is, I really, um, support the idea of an independent study. I used to live in Cowan Township before I moved to King of Prussia and then down here. But I lived in a house that was supposed to withstand the hundred-year flood, and I got flooded five times in one year. When I called the engineers, they told me that it was approved by the township, and they had an engineering firm. And so, I think an independent study is a good idea, because you never know about the backend of all of that. I never did figure out why they approved my house, but anyway, those are my comments.
We, we've been having this. I think that's it. Um, I just want to thank everybody for coming and sharing their comments, and, uh, reiterate again that we take them into consideration. We work for you, and, um, we will definitely make sure that there are agendas that go out on social media, on the news alerts, and, um, just stay posted. Uh, and if it does come on the agenda, if and when it does come on the agenda, we will definitely look into a bigger venue so that everybody could uh, be accommodated. So, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Russian passes. Thank you. Drive safely, everyone.